Get started. This is a regular meeting of the County Board of Commissioners, Hamilton County, July 8th, 2025. We have a new face at the dais, do we not? Yes. So we do introductions at our meetings, not to put you on the spot down there, but we're going to start with you. So please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Quinn, Executive Assistant.
Very nice.
Kristy Rieschel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm County Commissioner Denise Streighausen. A special welcome to Quinn. Is this your first day or?
Second day.
Second day. I apologize. You're an all-timer now. Well, welcome. Welcome to Hamilton County. We're glad to have you here. We start our meetings also with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to make a motion that we approve of the minutes to the previous session?
Second.
Commissioner Streighausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? I don't have any cards. Okay. All right. Let's move into comments and motions of Commissioners. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Thank you so much. We did just say a prayer, but I just wanted to say my heart is hurting for Texas and the flooding that's going on. And there's some thought that there may be more rain coming, and I cannot even imagine what those families are going through. And I just, they are in my prayers. The grand opening of the Satellite Office happened last week. It was a grand time. Lots of Public Safety people were there from all over, and I'm sure some of them are probably down in Texas helping out because I know we were sending some people down. And also, if you want to help, I would say Matthew 25 is a good one to help out. They do a lot of good work. And so I'm just praying that there may be a miracle in that process. So I know I was talking about the Satellite Office, which correlates to the Public Safety people, and I thank everybody for coming out. I've already gotten people who have stopped me. Actually, I was at church and one lady said, "Is it only for Forest Park residents to use that office?" I said, "No, all over, anywhere, if you don't want to go downtown." So I welcome everyone to come out. JFS is there, EMA is there, and 513 Relief Bus will be housed there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Reese, you're right on time. We're at comments and motions.
Can you go on?
Sure. So I too wanted to highlight the satellite site. And Commissioner Dumas, this was a brainchild of yours a number of years ago to make the services of the county more accessible to people throughout the county, particularly to those in the north in the outer reaches that have a difficult time getting downtown. So I was excited to see it. It looks spectacular. It does house a lot of emergency services and JFS importantly. So congratulations on that. I was glad to be part of the celebration.
Thank you.
With yourself and the Mayor of Forest Park and others that were celebrating the opening of that site. I also went to a ribbon cutting for Pedretti Place. This is a senior housing project out in Delhi Township, and all the trustees were there. Urban Sites was the developer on this project, and I think it's 40 units of senior housing out in Delhi Township. They are really doing a lot of development out in Delhi. It's very exciting, welcoming people into that community, or rather, giving people the ability to age in place is really what this was about. But when inside, it was really a very nice facility. So congratulations to the trustees out in Delhi and the residents who will be living in Pedretti Place. I also participated in something called Leadership Ohio. It's like Leadership Cincinnati, but Ohio, and represented the commission there, talked about sports complexes, and it was a fun group from all over the state, so I was glad to do that. And then lastly, offered a proclamation to Craig McKee on behalf of the commission over at Channel 9. He is moving on from Channel 9, but he particularly had an impact on this commission related to veterans. And so we wanted to give him some special recognition and thank him for bringing to our attention some of the concerns about veteran services here in Hamilton County. We have taken action. The new head of VSC has taken action. We've got a new board, and so things are going well. They've got the resources they need because of the board approved of that. And so Craig, though, brought a lot of this to our attention and made sure the veterans were being heard. So was happy to go on behalf of the commission over there and wish him farewell and thank him for all that he did for this county commission. So that's what I have. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you very much. Yeah, let me also join in congratulating Commissioner Dumas with the Satellite Office in Forest Park and was happy to support that as well. And the kickoff and ribbon cutting was fantastic. It is certainly important to, as we have a big county, and it's certainly important to have the Satellite Office in that part of the county. So just want to congratulate you again, and thank you for that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
With that, I also want to highlight a couple of things with the 513 Relief Bus. It's been really on the move. We've got certainly stops almost every week, a couple stops every week. People can go week. People can go to 513relief.org. Let me say that people still need help. In fact, more people need help than we had been saying because of what's happening out of Washington and the economy, et cetera. But we have special events that we go bigger, and I want to thank Travina and Scott and the entire team. I want to thank the administration because that's one of the things I said, we need to have these kind of big events that we would have on a quarterly or monthly basis, and they've been hitting out the ballpark. Moms, tots, and teens had a major event on Saturday, and I was over there at Corinthian Baptist Church. It took place, and it was just, I mean, they had free diapers, free bikes, free bike helmets. They had free car seats. They had workshops for moms and single moms and single dads. They had hair braiding, and it was just tremendous. Oh, yeah, the bike, I need a bigger size. But I had a good, it reminded me, I was on training wheels a long time before I learned how to really ride a bike, so my family got a kick out of seeing that picture. But it was just great. We had a partnership. Fifth Third Bank was there with their banking, mobile banking. The AKAs were there. A number of folks were involved. I hate if I missed anybody. But they even had, like I said, free hair braiding was happening for youth in there. This was just great. And of course, you got to take the blood pressure checks and all those kinds of things. So it was just a great event, and the library was there, Office of Youth was there, and Tennis Foundation. I got to play tennis and pickleball with the young people, the kids, and they whooped me. They whooped me. I should have, I should have brought our clerk. You love pickleball, but they killed me on the, but it was just cool to see how they could set up tennis in the neighborhood, just like right on that parking lot. And they had little bitty kids, and I thought I could get them because they were like five years old. I said, I can do them. They got me. So just want to say great job to the entire team that was responsible for putting that together. And I want to give a shout out to Travina Adams, Scott Wilson, Arlene Dorville, and the entire team. Of course, we're grateful for the support from Humana. That's who brought the bikes, and Mercy, who had donations as well. So that's a big deal. Now, what, the question I got from a lot of people, can this be, how do I get this, how do I get these services? And I live in another county. I said, it's very simple. Move to Hamilton County. They don't, they don't have it in these other counties. They're not offering it. Move to Hamilton County. So wanted to just give a big shout out with that. With that in mind, I want to also remind everybody, our next big event, obviously this month, our board had a proclamation in our last meeting honoring, this is Disability Month, and so we have, our 513 Relief Bus will have Disability Day, which will be on Saturday, July the 12th. Everything you need to know about if you have any type of disability, everything you need to know, plus bring the whole family. Last year was great. A lot of people came and signed up for stuff they didn't know was available to them. And someone even asked me, is this bus accessible? And we were able to show them. It's accessible. So that's going to come up on Saturday, July the 12th. So want to put that on the calendar. The bus is multipurpose, as we've always said, and I'm excited that the 513 Relief Bus will, on June 14th, so 12th, we're with Disability Day. On the 14th, we will be in front of the Aaronoff Center for Black Tech Week, and we will be everything small business. And this is going to be incredible as people come from all over and people all over the county, all over the country, they will be able to see. I know Mr. Robert Bell and his team, and they've got a whole small business team going to be on there. And I want to thank Holly and her team getting this done. We've got, it's going to be incredible. Black Tech Week, and then we have our 513 Relief Mobile Tech Bus. And you'll be able to go on there. You'll be able to learn how to do business with the county. You'll be able to learn what's available. We've got some other partners that'll be there for technology companies to do business with us, one-on-ones. I don't think any tech week in the country has what we have. And so that'll be, the whole bus will be turned into that. But we also know that small business people, you don't take care of your health. So we'll have blood pressure checks and all that there as well to make sure, because it's very stressful being an entrepreneur out here. So excited about that. You'll hear more from that and our partners Alloy Development, ECDI, the Ohio Department of Taxation, Ready, UC Health, and the Office of Economic Inclusion will be all the services. We'll have SBA 504 Loan Program that we have, micro loans, tax guidance, health services, and more, and it's absolutely free. So we're excited about that partnership this year with Black Tech Week. And then my, I think I got all of them so everybody knows. You can go to 513relief.org to get all the information. So please go there and get the information. As mentioned earlier about our veterans, I wanted to highlight that we will be having our second annual Veterans and Military Appreciation Day, and that will be in August. But we want you to register so you can get some free food. Register now, and you can go to our page, 513relief.org, and it'll get you to the right place as our partnership with Veteran Services. This one, I'm excited because we're expanding. They're going to bring the, the mobile units, national mobile units will come, and you can get approved and apply on the spot for these veteran services in addition to the county veteran services. Once again, I don't know any other county that has that but us. So people say, how can I get it? Move to Hamilton County, and you can get all these services. But that's going to be a big day. It's going to be at Sawyer Point. It's going to be a two-day, I think, event. But you can go to 513relief.org, and I'll just keep that announcing so no veteran is, and no person, you can be a veteran or serving in the military currently, and you can participate in your families, and it's open to the public. But we'll have services for them. So I'm super excited for that second annual. My last thing is a somber note. I was going to bring him here when we got ready for him to go into the National Baseball Hall of Fame. And unfortunately, he passed away, the one and only great Dave Parker. Dave Parker, Major League Baseball player, and he passed away. He had Parkinson's. He was fighting Parkinson's. And he should have been in the Major League Baseball Hall of Fame a long time ago, and we were hoping that he would be able to see it. But he is going into the Baseball Hall of Fame. His funeral will be taking place at Corinthian Baptist Church on this Thursday. I believe it starts at four o'clock. And I know people have been calling from across the country. He was a family friend. He's known me a long time, known my parents. But here's a guy, came out of the public school system. I believe he went to Quarter Tech, went on, invested back in Cincinnati, sponsored a lot of youth sports. I remember when I ran in 1999, he was my first celebrity to support me. He had just opened Popeyes Chicken, him and his wife Kelly, first Popeyes, I believe, in the city. And I ran over there to get a pitcher, me and Dave, and he said, I'm going to support you. Dave Parker also was very heavily supportive of music. He sponsored some of the artists that we know now that went on to become big. Group called Essence and then became The Deal. He was a sponsor of their first record, so he was a record producer. So I'm hoping maybe we'll have something on the screen down there at the Black Music Walk of Fame honoring him as well on the screen. But Dave Parker and his family, they did a lot. They invested a lot. They sponsored a lot. He came from the nub. He came from the community, and I want to thank Vice Mayor Jan-Michel Kearney and the city for giving him a street in Cummingsville where he grew up. And I had the honor of, he asked me if I would speak, and I had the honor to speak there. But I thank God they were able to do the street. And I mean, everybody from Cummings, I mean, they shut down Cummingsville. All the people and all the stories and all the laughter, he was able to see. So just want to keep his wife and his family in our prayers. The Cobra has been laid to rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Aluda?
Thank you, Commissioners. I really only have one comment. If you could indulge me just for a second while I think Bridget goes to.
We have a special presentation.
I'm sure she's thrilled. I'm sure she's thrilled about coming in, so.
Oh, no. She refusing to come in. Oh, wait, we'll, we'll take a minute.
Well, I can, I can make one comment while we're waiting. I was looking at the funding and the lack of funding that's starting to happen from the federal government. The library funds are being tremendously cut, and also our Boys and Girls Club funding is being cut. So we need to, it's happening right now, and we need to be aware of it. It's not going to be later. I'm trying to.
Filibuster.
She's, she's.
I think I'm reporting, and I am.
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Commissioner.
Our guest of honor has arrived.
And, and I'm sure Teresa is completely thrilled about this.
She's now on my list.
So Commissioners, for my one comment, I do have a bylaw item, but it's an appointment. But my one comment, I just wanted to say a couple of words that I believe it was 32 years ago, right, Teresa, or 32 years plus, that Teresa, that the county had the good fortune of having Teresa come, Teresa Gilio come to be an employee of the county. It was almost exactly 10 years ago that I had asked Teresa if she would serve as the Executive Assistant in my office, and I don't know if it's a decision that she looks back on favorably, but, but, but she's, but she said that she, she would do that. Teresa is retiring. For those of you who may be watching at home that are not aware, Teresa's retiring after 32 years at the county, 10 years in the Administrator's Office. I don't think I'm over-exaggerating by saying that since Teresa has joined the administration, she has been the glue that has held this floor together. There's, I just, everyone knows I just go back to movies all the time, right? So it just popped in my head, I think, James Earl Jones in Field of Dreams said, the one constant has been baseball. Well, the one constant has been Teresa, you know, constantly throughout her time here. She has been the face of, of the county. She's been the voice of the county. She's been the glue. I can say that every positive thing that has come out of county administration, every program, every initiative that the administration has worked on has Teresa's fingerprints on it. And that is not an exaggeration. That is absolutely the truth. I know from a personal level, every positive thing that I have had the good fortune of having to be involved in and do on behalf of this community has Teresa's fingerprints all over it. So I want, I want to thank her for that. We had a, a lunch last week, and there were a lot of stories traded back and forth about, about Teresa. And I would just share one, and it wasn't one that I had told, but someone else, that someone else had told. And that was, I think, the board knows occasionally we get, we get people up on this floor who have, who are coming here because they don't know where else to turn, right? We had an incident with one of the individual a couple of weeks ago, I think, during a board meeting. And so as the county in general responded to assist that individual, what did Teresa do? Teresa made the gentleman a sandwich. And, and, and literally did what she constantly does, and that is take care of people and steward people when they need it, as she has done for so many of us on this, on this floor and, and in the county. And I'm just really, as much as it is heartbreaking to me to lose Teresa, I'm just thrilled that she now gets the opportunity to take care of herself a bit and to do the things that she wants to do. So Commissioners, I know you have a proclamation. I'm going to turn it over to you, Madam President, but I just, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to lead on this one. When I, when I did this at the lunch the other day, I said, I do this type of thing a lot, talking about people when they're, this one is personal and so much more, more difficult. I said, I know people are expecting a lot of funny stories and things. I can't do it because this is just a really hard one for me. But I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to lead the discussion today. And I turn it back over to you for the formal proclamation.
Thank you, thank you. All right. I have to stand there for a minute because we've got the proclamation, which we're going to read, and then I'm certain that we all have comments. But let's do this proclamation first. So this is a proclamation honoring Teresa Gilio for 32 years of dedicated service to Hamilton County. Whereas Teresa Gilio has served Hamilton County and its residents with unwavering commitment, skill, and professionalism for more than 32 years and three months, leaving an indelible mark on nearly every corner of county government.
And whereas Teresa began her public service journey in December 1991 with the Hamilton County Job and Family Services Income Maintenance Division, Children's Services Division, and Human Resources Division, where she worked tirelessly to support essential programs for families and children until November 1999. And whereas she continued her dedication at the Family and Children First Council from December 2000 to March 2003, helping connect families with critical services, and then served the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board from March 2003 to July 2005, supporting programs that strengthened our communities' health and recovery resources. And whereas Teresa returned to JFS Human Resources in July 2005, then brought her invaluable expertise to the county's Central Human Resources Department from December 2007 to March 2017, where her steady leadership helped recruit, support, and develop the county's workforce.
And whereas for the past eight years, Teresa has served as the Senior Executive Assistant to the County Administrator, Mr. Jeff Aludo, where she has been the calm, organized, and trusted right hand to the county leadership, keeping the Board of County Commissioners, county administration, and countless stakeholders on track every single day. Whereas Teresa's colleagues know her as the ultimate professional, dependable, resourceful, kind, and always willing to go the extra mile. Her institutional knowledge, welcoming demeanor, and commitment to public service are irreplaceable. And whereas, Hamilton County owes Teresa a debt of gratitude for her decades of dedicated service, steady guidance, and the countless ways, big and small, she has improved county government for employees and residents alike.
So now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby recognize and commend Teresa Gilio for her 32 years and three months of outstanding service to Hamilton County, extend best wishes for the, for fulfilling and well-deserved retirement, and does hereby proclaim July 8th, 2025, as Teresa Gilio Day in all of Hamilton County. Woo, woo, woo! I know you're just dying to speak, but before we get to that, I know that we all want to congratulate you on your retirement, best wishes and all that. But, you know, for those that can't see it, there are a lot of people in this room right now. They weren't here at the beginning of the meeting. So people have come for this occasion to wish you farewell and to recognize your dedication to this county. It really is remarkable, Teresa. And so you, and Jeff said it, you know, when you think about how this floor runs, how the county runs, you are the glue. I mean, you're the go-to. You've, you've always been the go-to. Every time I get a new staff or an intern in, I'm like, if you have a question, ask Teresa, because Teresa knows everything about everything and is the one that organizes all of us, particularly the administrator, which I think may be a difficult task. But, and so. But and supplies us with enough candy to get us through the day. So I just, you know, can't say enough about all that you've meant to my office personally and to me personally, knowing that I can rely on you for good information. You're always directing, you know, on where we should go, what we should do. So it's just been such a delight to, to work with you here at the county. I know you're a good Westsider, so I don't want to have that go without saying. Because I too am a good Westsider. But, but yeah, so I don't know what you have planned for your retirement, but I hope it's a lot of fun. So thank you, thank you for all that you've done and congratulations, Teresa. Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Thank you so much. I'm not going to say a lot because I know where I will go if I do. But your actions speak louder than words. Always consistent, your demeanor. I know when I would come out of those long executive sessions to go back in, you always had your chocolate for me. So we have to make sure Trina has, has a chocolate dish so I won't miss you as much. And I think about, we say jack of all trades. I guess I will say Jackie of all trades. And so the president said it all that even if you didn't know, you let us know you did and you would find it out. So certainly appreciate you and look forward to your future happiness. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, thank you. I think the proclamation was missing one whereas. Whereas you started when here when you were 12. Because you are still young enough. And anybody thinking about working for the county, look at Teresa, doesn't she look beautiful? Come on. But no, you, your, your institutional knowledge is super incredibly important. You're able to juggle so many different things, be able to keep up with this guy right here and keep up with us as Commissioners as we come and you say, oh, he just went down to Holla. I'll have him get right with you. And you just never like have to write it down. And you like remember, I'm like, how does she remember all this? She didn't write anything down. But you never forget it and you know what's going on. And you're from your office at that time to the front desk. The almost security one time, you say, wait, wait, you can't go down there and use the restroom. It's this way. So I've just, you know, it's, it's just an incredible loss for us. But thank you for all that you've done. And I'm glad you, you just stuck around to try to get Trina trained and everything going. But thank you for your service. I think you shared with me some good times. I tried to convince you. I said, are you sure you want to leave? I mean, don't you want to stay? Like, well, you know, I'm sitting by the pool and beach might be all right. And I said, well, I can't compete with that. So enjoy it. I'm glad that you're young enough to be able to enjoy your retirement. But please know that you made your mark in Hamilton County. And on behalf of not just our board and the workers here, but on behalf of the entire residents of Hamilton County, we would just want to say thank you.
Thank you. And now it's your turn, Teresa.
My career here has been just amazing. I've met the best people. I've worked for the best people. I've made friendships that will last a lifetime and that is just irreplaceable. You know, there's just nowhere else you will go. You will connect with the people like you do here. They're the best. They really are. You know, I'd like to shout out definitely to my first person, my first manager that hired me is Carmen Orso. So the interview lasted like two hours because we just got off topic and started chatting, but it was awesome. And I've had great managers ever since Larry Mitchell, David Helm, Joe Galardo, Cheryl Keller. I could go on and on and ultimately Jeff. I mean, they've, they've just all been amazing and I am just so thankful for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. We're going to come take a photo.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, why don't you join us for this one? It's going to be great. Boop, boop, boop. There we go. Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, let's move into our agenda. We've got the consent agenda, Jeff. Walk us through.
We do. Thank you, Commissioners. Walking through the consent agenda, we have item number one. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I do have one by leave. If you, with your indulgence, I will hit that first. And actually, I believe it's an appointment.
Yeah, I'll do it. This is a resolution appointing a member to the Hamilton County Hospital Commission, which is Rick Hines. So Commissioners, are there any questions or comments?
No questions.
All right, I'm going to move that we approve of by leave number one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number one on the consent agenda is a resolution appointing one member to the Hamilton County Public Defender Commission. It's Gabrielle Fletcher. Item number two is a resolution adopting the 2026 tax budget. This is just for a bit of explanation for someone who may be watching at home. This is not the budget of the county. This is a requirement of the Ohio Revised Code that every political subdivision develop an initial estimate of expenditures and revenues for the subsequent year that are then forwarded to the auditor and the budget commission. It kind of signals the start of the budget process. But it doesn't have to align and rarely does align or consistently with the ultimate administrator's recommended budget and certainly not the budget that the board will ultimately adopt later this year. Item number three is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with DDS. This relates to the relocation of DDS to 1701 Mercy Health, what was formerly known as Mercy Health Place. This is, allows for the recruitment of $7.2 million in capital costs for the acquisition of that facility, as well as spells out the terms of DDS's tenancy in the building, their, their payment of operating cost, how capital costs will be determined, et cetera. Item number four is a budget adjustment. It's Budget Adjustment 25 for state grants. This is a $250,000 grant in the sheriff's office and a $178,000 transfer within a grant fund within environmental services. Item number five is a resolution of an agreement with the OKI Regional Council of Governments. This is for planning or regional planning services annually with OKI $276,328. Item number, and much of that is reimbursed by the Metropolitan Sewer District, the County Engineer and Environmental Services. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the purchase of four Dodge Durangos in the sheriff's office for $149,076. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the donation of obsolete equipment from Environmental Services to the Ohio EPA. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2026 International cab and chassis on behalf of Hamilton County Planning and Development. I believe that's out of the Water Rotary Fund, $218,279. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the award of an invitation to bid to Glenwood Electric. This is for the emergency power replacement and fuel tank replacement at the Justice Center, $1.991 million. Just as a note, this is, this project is 20% small business enterprise and also hit both of the thresholds identified in the, in the ITB for MBE and WBE at 8.1% and 17% respectively. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the City of Loveland. It's a grant agreement from the Solid Waste Management District, $5,330. This is for the placement of, the purchase and placement of recycling containers in the downtown business district of Loveland. Then we have some JFS items. Item number 11 is youth, is an agreement for youth employment services with Harbor Behavioral Healthcare, $212,808. Item number 12 is a resolution appointing two members to serve on the Child Abuse and Neglect Regional Prevention Council. This is Margie Weaver and Brittany Dudley. Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Lighthouse Youth Services for residential treatment services, $106,000. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing the renewal of an agreement with the United Methodist Children's Home for family placement services, $300,000. And item 15 Commissioners, I'm sorry, the totality of the JFS items totals $618,808. Item 15 Commissioners is a resolution authorizing a zoning map amendment for Case Green 2025-01 Anevsky Retail. This is from Zero PUD Office Planned Unit Development to EE Planned Retail. This is consistent with the public hearing that the board had previously held on this matter. Commissioners, that is your consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have a question about item number nine. This is the one about the Justice Center emergency power and fuel tank replacement. I, I note the word emergency and I don't know what that indicates here, if there was an emergency situation there or if that indicates something different.
No, it is just the emergency power system there, so.
There was no emergency. It's just the emergency system.
This is a plan document for that system.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I didn't want to raise any alarms, but I thought, oh my, what's going on here? All right, Commissioner Summer Adumas.
No questions.
Commissioner Reese?
No questions, but I do want to highlight Gabriel Fletcher for the reappointment for the Public Defender Commission. And just wanted to highlight the good work that he and the board have been doing. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items one through 15.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we've got two executive sessions. So I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning a matter that is subject to pending litigation and another exec session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale or acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.